Good morning, welcome again to Hardin County Commissioners Court. We've had two special meetings and now we're moving into our regular meeting. It is Tuesday, August 27th, 2019. It is 10:08 a.m. All members of the court are present and this meeting is called order. Whoever wants to please rise to the invocation by Commissioner Pelt.
Father, we thank you, many blessed is life. Praise you be with us now that we conduct the business of Hardin County. Give us some wisdom and guidance to do what is right for the taxpayers. Praise you to be with our nation, that you bless our nation, forgive our sins. Amen.
And the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. You're welcome. Item number three, approved minutes of the August 13th, 2019 regular meeting and the August 21st, 2019 special meeting as presented by Ms. Lynn Dawson.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Roberts and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number four, cancel all register claims from the August 13th, 2019 regular meeting as requested and approval of cash statement as presented by Deborah McWilliams. Good morning, Ms. McWilliams.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me of the liability of $1,045,275.98. For our cash report and our general checking account, we have $1,611,053. In tax pool, we have $10,034,73.07 for a total cash funds of $11,645,73.60.
Motion.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Roberts and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. McWilliams. Item number five, authorization to pay county bills as presented by Angela Gore. Ms. Gore?
The pre-approved expenditures for August the 15th are $280.56. The pre-approved expenditures for August the 19th were $211.17. Expenditures for Commissioners Court on August the 27th are $386,969.06 and attached is a list of additional bills in an amount of $337,673.83. The total expenditures and transfers are $725,134.62. The gross payroll for August the 29th is $466,613.21. The total transfers for that payroll is $569,509.37.
So paid bills.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number six, discussion and possible action to approve and accept the filing in the minutes of the court. The District Court orders setting the salaries of the county auditor, assistant county auditors, and official court reporters of the 88th and 356 judicial district courts for fiscal year 2020. We have the orders in our packets and spoken to Ms. Gore regarding this and the salaries that were approved by the district judges match what is in the proposed county budget for the year 2020, fiscal year 2020. Any other comments? Thank you, Ms. Gore.
Motion. Second.
A motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And I appreciate Judge Stover and Judge Thomas for keeping with what was proposed by the Commissioners Court in those salaries. Item number seven, consider and possibly approve the following budget amendment. Create a new line item in the election equipment fund, 012-491-573, election equipment, and transfer $12,125 from the election equipment fund balance to this newly created line item for the purchase of pole pads.
Motion.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Roberts and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Is that correct?
Close.
I had a bunch, so that's what I wanted.
I believe you got it, Judge.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number eight, presentation of Hardin County's Excellence in Safety Award for 2018. Debbie Mendesaba, good morning.
Good morning. Hardin County has been the recipient of the Excellence in Safety Award for 2018, presented by Texas Association of Counties Risk Management.
Good.
It's very pretty. To be considered for this award, they must meet the following criteria. They must have a safety committee. They must have a loss ratio of less than 50%. They must have training on back injury prevention, slips, trips, and falls. Driver training, use of personal protection, and fire safety. This is the 15th year we receive an Excellence Award from Texas Association of Counties and we will put it on display in front of the HR office on the ball.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave.
Item number nine, consider and possibly approve appointment of Sheriff Mark Davis as an ex officio non-voting member of the Spindletop Center Board of Trustees pursuant to Senate Bill 632, signed into law by Governor Abbott on June 14th, 2019.
Motion.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? We'll all see a letter in the package from the Chief Executive Officer of Spindletop Center, Holly Burrell, recommending the appointment of Sheriff Davis. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number 10, discuss and possibly approve the reappointment of Ms. Gay Lokee as a trustee of Spindletop Center for a two-year term effective September 1st, 2019.
Motion.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Roberts and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number 11, consider and possibly approve request for County Judge to sign school year revision and adoption of HC JJAEP memorandum of understanding for the 2019-2020 school year, a request made by Jared Fountain, the Assistant Chief of the Juvenile Probation Department.
Motion.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion?
What are we reviewing?
This is just a renewal of the agreement, so it's just the next year's agreement for the Hardin County JJAEP program, is that correct? There are no changes to the agreement other than the year?
No changes other than the year.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Any other discussion regarding this item? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number 12, consideration of the following resolutions for adoption. Number 29-19, authorizing the submission of a Texas Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Acquisition Grant application to the Texas General Land Office in the amount of $3,388,238.56. And Resolution 30-19, authorizing the submission of a Texas Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Infrastructure Grant application to the Texas General Land Office in the amount of $8,583,167.11. And authorizing Judge Wayne McDaniel to act as the county's executive officer and authorize representative in all matters pertaining to the county participation in the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program, a request made by Amanda Young, Club County Administrator.
Motion.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Pelt, is that correct?
Correct.
This is regarding the allocation of funds that we've discussed previously from the General Land Office for infrastructure and buyouts, correct, Amanda?
Yes.
Okay, this authorizes the submission of those applications. Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number 13, discussion and possible action to approve and accept replat of Lot 47 of Beaumont Colony Central into lots 47A and 47B located in Precinct 1. Amanda Young?
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is a lot they are just splitting up for their son. It's been through the engineers and we have an approval on it. I've talked to Mr. Cooper about it.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooper, any comments?
No, sir, I moved to the court.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number 14, discussion and possible action to approve a plan for the District Clerk's Technology Fund for the preservation and restoration of District Clerk's records. A request made by Dana Hogg and we just completed the public hearing regarding this said plan.
Motion.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number 15, discussion and possible action to accept the Governor's proclamation ordering the November 5th, 2019 constitutional amendment election.
Motion.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Roberts and a second by Commissioner Pelt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number 16, discussion and possible action to accept the Hardin County Emergency Services District Number 4 Resolution calling for an election to adopt a local sales and use tax at the rate of 2% inside the district's boundaries, excluding any territory in the district where the local sales and use tax is at 2%.
Motion.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Cooper. And just for the court's information, Ms. Austin informed me she has a similar resolution from Lumberton ISD that would be on the next agenda. Any other discussion regarding this resolution from ESD 4?
Yeah, there's one question. I can't remember. I know these districts have had these elections in the past. Do they put the bill for that or does the county pay for the election?
It's on our ballot, so.
Does it cost any extra just to add that item to the ballot? So it's not a special election.
That'll be during the Constitution.
Yes.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number 17, consider and possibly approve memorandum of understanding between Hardin County Constable's Office Precinct 4 and Hardin Dirks and Reyes Lee regarding Deputy Constable Scott Ali, serving as school resource officer for the 2019-2020 school year effective September 1st, 2019.
Motion.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Roberts. There are two changes to the agreement from last year to this year. The first change is just the school year. The second change is an increase in wages of 4% over last year, which the school pays 100% of the salaries and fringes. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number 18, discussion and possible action regarding request for approval to apply for additional funding opportunity for Fall 2019 FDA Retail Course. No match required, this is a request by Regina Bolton, Health Inspector.
Motion.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 19, permission to solicit bids for overlaying approximately one-half mile on Oak Ridge Drive and three-tenths of a mile on Burge Road located in Precinct 4.
Motion.
Second.
I need to.
A motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Commissioner Roberts?
And I would like to add to that four-tenths of a mile on Cooks Lake Road, which spans between Oak Ridge and Burge. It's a road that needs to be, it's part of the road that needs to be done and being as it, we're going to be there doing this, it'll be more efficient as far as expenditures and getting it done that way.
I think we could have a special meeting to do that.
Yeah, I don't think we can do it, but it'd be on the agenda, is it correct?
Yeah.
Well, we're not, we're just going for bids, we're not asking for money or anything. This is just putting it out there for bids.
I still think you have to put it on a separate agenda. I mean, I'm willing to come to a special meeting if Allen is, you're available.
Sure.
Is that fine with you, Allen?
That'll be fine.
Why don't we, we have the motion to solicit bids from Commissioner Pelt, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. If y'all will rescind that, let's just table it and do it all at one time at the next meeting.
I'm, 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 drop my motion.
Is that okay with you, Allen?
Yeah, or we can do a different meeting, like I said, especially in getting. I'm trying, I'm in a timeframe as far as getting things done.
We could have a special meeting on, the earliest would be Friday.
That's fine, I'll be here.
Okay.
All needs me and Allen. Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Pelt to table item number 19.
Yeah.
Commissioner Cooper, you second that?
Yes. I second.
Item number 19, all in favor of tabling item number 19?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. What time would y'all like to meet on Friday?
When I convene with you, Judge. 10 o'clock? 9 o'clock? 8 o'clock?
Sound like a song. Uh, 9 o'clock?
9 o'clock.
We'll meet at 9 o'clock. Actually, that's too early, we can't. It has to be after, if we can post that agenda by 11 o'clock, we could do it at 11 o'clock.
11 o'clock.
11 o'clock on Friday, August 30th, we'll set a special meeting.
Okay.
Laura? This item number 19 needs to be on there and add four-tenths of a mile on Cooks Lake Road.
Four-tenths of a mile. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You are.
Mr. Cooper and Commissioner Kirkendall, y'all are invited to attend as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Yes, sir. Item number 20, results in the warning of bids received for equipment to be used for mosquito abatement, mapping, and surveillance utilizing funds received from the Hurricane Recovery Crisis Cooperative Agreement grant. Hardin County Health Department received these funds to conduct surveillance for West Nile and Zika viruses with the assistance of Orange County Vector Control. Mr. Sims, purchasing agent. Good morning, Ms. Sims.
Good morning.
Just for the court's information, Ms. Sims informed me yesterday that this was a very difficult, complicated process that she went through, but she had some assistance and we appreciate the assistance from Orange County.
Yes, sir. Mr. Patrick Beebe with Orange County mosquito control assisted in the sharing and evaluation of the bid. Apologies if I pronounce anything wrong or some hard things to pronounce. So the first one is a sprayer and it's London Fall 910 with pump and that apparent low bidder is MCES.
Are you on, you're on item number one?
Yes, sir.
Where it says ULV ground units?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, those are my notes I was reading, I'm sorry.
And the low bid is MCES, got it.
Yes, sir. The second one is Scourge 1854 insecticide and that would be, the low bid is Univar with the control 3167. The third one is Fifanol insecticide and we had a tie bid on that one, so we draw lots. So Stacy's going to look.
So the ties between Adapco and Univar?
Yes, sir.
And y'all have two slips of paper with those names on it?
Yes, sir.
And somebody's going to draw?
Yes, sir.
Stacy?
My lovely assistant.
Debbie Mendesaba's drawing the names.
Univar.
Adapco is the one should drew.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Number four is CDC Miniature Light Trap, quantity of 12. That one goes to John W. Hawk. Number five is New Jersey Light Trap with a seven-day timer and that one is also John W. Hawk. We didn't receive any bids for the Garmin handheld GPS. Those were estimated to be around 600 apiece, so we will try to just get three bids and purchase those separately.
Okay.
And all of, go ahead.
Go ahead.
All of this is grant funds, none out of Hardin County funds.
Correct, yes, sir.
Because we don't have mosquito control district, so we cannot spend funds on them.
Yes, sir.
And this will all be done in Orange County, right?
Yes, sir.
And the reason that Hardin County is taking the action on this is through our memorandum of understanding with Orange County through our health department, correct?
Who accept the bids as presented.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number 21, discussion only regarding the scheduling of regular meetings of Commissioners Court for fiscal year 2020. At our next regular meeting on September the 10th, we will have the order prepared to set our regular meetings beginning in October through next September, 2020. This year, we've been meeting every other Tuesday. That was to ensure that we were here to meet to approve the payroll and all other expenditure for the county. There were some legislative changes made that I think they go into effect on September 1st. Is that right, Angela?
No, they actually went into effect the date that it was signed.
In June.
But we just continued, since our meetings are already scheduled, we just continued as is.
So I wanted to bring this to the attention of the court and let's talk about it as a court before I go through the trouble, or actually Laura, go through the trouble of putting that order together. That order will include or can include, if the court desires, that we can pay payroll and other ordinary regular expenses such as utilities and things of that nature in between our regular meetings as we used to do. We used to call that mini-court. And if the court would like to do that, we could, I like meeting on Tuesdays and I hope that y'all do as well, but it's the pleasure of the court, whatever y'all would like to do, we could go back to meeting the second and fourth Tuesday if you would like to do so. And that is the recommendation I received from Mrs. Debbie there, Nick Williams. Almost caught her in the gallium for some reason. And Angela Gore, they both asked me if we would consider meeting the second and fourth Tuesday. They said it would be helpful to them regarding the information they have to put together for court.
It works well with payroll and everything, seems to me like.
Yes, sir, but instead of meeting every other Tuesday, we could cut out a couple of meetings, which I think would be three last meetings a year if we meet the second and fourth Tuesday instead of every other Tuesday.
Oh, okay, I didn't understand that.
Or we can keep meeting every other Tuesday.
I like every other Tuesday.
Okay.
Is that fine with you, Judge?
It's fine with me, it's not what the auditor and the treasurer want us to do. But, and maybe y'all can explain the reason of that.
It's just the process of it, it's just when we meet every other Tuesday, we're always preparing for court. And when we did the second and fourth Tuesday, there was a couple of times a year that it, that we did have those extra weeks in between that helped our office out.
The thing is, we can go back and pay bills like we used to, that's not a problem.
Right, I can have that order prepared and what I'd like to do is just submit it to everyone, let you look at it, if you have any comments you want to make, we can be ready to adopt that at the September 10th meeting and if there's change, the need to be made, that gives us to the last meeting of September to make those changes and be ready for October to start those meetings.
I like it twice a month and Tuesdays is perfect for me.
So the second and fourth Tuesday or every other Tuesday?
Second.
Mr. Cooper?
I think more along the lines of.
Every other Friday?
I'm good with what I'll do.
That's, that's fine with me. I can handle it.
Robert, second and fourth, good.
But we're not changing payroll system or anything.
No, no, all that's good.
So my secretary doesn't have to worry about deadlines now and getting them voucher them, right?
Well, as soon as you receive them, you should turn them.
Well, I do. I'm just saying, she, she called me sometimes on Thursday even and said, this one's got to be there for court, whatever, but.
Well, on regular utility bills and things like that, we'll be able to pay those in between. Anything that we can make sure gets paid before there's a due date, we can, according to the legislation, we can pay those in between. And that'll all be included on the proposed order that's submitted on September 10th. Ms. McWilliams, anything you want to say?
It's just basically, you know, they had decided that we had to have payroll approved, but this legislature changed that wording to where as long as it's a budgeted, you know, we're staying in the realm of the budgeted salary with the budgeted things, y'all don't have to approve that anymore, which, because you already have.
We can approve it retroactive.
Right. So it kind of gives that freedom to not have to have a payroll presented to you every court.
Unbelated, Angela's office and missed it, everybody catches it if there's not. Yeah, we appreciate that, too. And 10 a.m. is still a good meeting time, everyone?
Yeah.
Preferred?
Preferred.
Good, alright. Item number 22, discussion only, have any other items not on the agenda without taking any action? Does any member of the court have a discussion item?
Yes, sir, I have one.
Mr. Kirkendall?
We were made aware this week of our collections being down and I just wanted to ask, is there any identifying causes as to why they're down?
And Ms. Cook, just want to add that I asked Ms. Cook yesterday for a current collection summary and received that from Lisa Finn this morning, so thank y'all for getting that to us and I have passed this out to everyone. So, and I did reply to Lisa, I don't know if she's seen it yet or not, but I did tell her I was going to need another lesson on how to read this. So everybody has this in front of you. And Ms. Cook, do you have one?
I do.
Okay, is that what you're fixing the records?
Well, first of all, I want to, we did a comparison and you, I believe, received it in your packet, not this time, but a couple Commissioners Court ago.
Is that when we took action on the list and lots of lists, list of lots and whatever?
Yes, sir. And it was attached to that, but we didn't discuss it. So I just wanted to say from the timeframe that we do a report, usually the delinquent, taxes go delinquent July 1st. So we usually do a report October through June. And we did that report and our collections were at 97.65%, which is a small increase of .0006% over last year from 17. We're still in 2018 tax year. I know Commissioner Cooper prayed for a speedy court.
That was the last meeting and it was quick, so.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
This one, this is a collection summary that was run through yesterday that Lisa Finn did and we are at 99.67%. So we have, we had the compressor refunds that came out this year. Commissioner Cooper had also requested at the end of this fiscal year for us to do a report on all refunds. Those refunds come out of collections and we will have that, we've been working on it continuing through the year since he requested that. The compressor refunds were $49,324.87, just from, that's just Hardin County.
How much again? I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you.
And then all the other refunds that we've had, which you have approved throughout the year, we will have that report at the end of fiscal year.
Thank you.
To reflect what refunds have actually come out of our collections. So, and it has been, we have had quite a bit of refunds this year, so.
Was that including any of the compressor refunds due to the lawsuit on compressors?
That's the one that, the $49,000.
Yeah, that's what I said, but that's an anomaly, that will be now reoccurring.
That's correct.
Yeah.
That is correct.
Yeah, so.
The other refunds that we have, we will, we will have a report as requested by.
But those, those are normal.
Correct.
It's the compressor deal that where we got caught in this.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. So I just wanted to tell everyone, no, we are at 99.67, which I think is about, it's about right where we should be.
Now, can I ask you a question about that?
Sure, yes, sir.
When you say 99.67, that includes the current collections, which is 2018, plus any collections that NVBA has been able to collect for us from delinquent taxes of prior years, correct?
Yes, sir, that is your current and delinquent.
So the current collections is actually the 96.06%? Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay.
96.06 is where we are as of yesterday on collections.
And we budget on a 99% collection rate for the, for the year. We recently lowered that to 98 for next year because of this reason.
Surely on the current, is that about normal? Because I know each year we're doing current and delinquent. Surely on the current, is that about normal? Because I know each year we're doing current and delinquent. So is that normal?
We are, I think we are right where we usually are at this time. Excuse me. We have, of course, till the end of September, which this is, we're through with our quarter payments, which went in in July. Our last quarter payments went in in July. I was talking to the judge. We send out our statements in October. The county has contract with N B B A to do our delinquent taxes. A taxpayer that does not pay his taxes, we do not call them on the phone. No, no other tax collector that ever calls and, you know, you're bordering, you have to be very careful about bordering on harassment for calling somebody. Delinquent tax attorneys, some delinquent tax attorneys do. Ours does not. They send out the notices. Tax liens have been applied with and show what the, you know, the fees are for them actually going, going. That is at the, we don't pay them except on what they collect. If they don't, and that's in your monthly reports that we give, that shows what we pay our D T A. But it's only based on what that we have actually, they have actually collected. So it's not like we pay them a specific fee each month or anything. That's just based on that, so.
So it's a fair assumption that minus, like, the compressors and the things that we've refunded, that we should be normal by the end of September?
It is my opinion that we will be where we, when we, when you take out the, your adjustments from any refunds, you should be where you, you know, I think we're at a good place right now, just showing the adjustments at ninety-nine point seven, which is your total, which is money coming in, whether it was delinquent or current, which I know we base on current, but we're at ninety-six oh-six as of yesterday.
So most years, we end up going over a hundred percent when we add in the delinquents and penalty interest.
We have gone over.
Yeah, we have gone over a hundred percent.
Yes, sir, and I don't know what, I don't know what last year.
I don't know. It seems like nearly every year I've been on the court, we go, end up going over a hundred percent.
The delinquent tax attorneys do that push in July, and then people start trying to make arrangements and get them, you know, get them paid.
Even during Rita and Ike and Harvey, the Harden County taxpayers have been very good about paying their taxes.
Yes, sir.
We had thought after Harvey, we might have a real drop, but it did not happen.
It didn't. So many people have, their taxes are escrowed through their mortgage.
Yeah.
Mortgage companies can make sure those taxes are paid.
Yeah.
And we did have that concern after Harvey.
Yeah.
That our collections would fall off, but they didn't.
They didn't.
No, sir. So.
One last follow-up.
Sure.
So the two hundred and thirty thousand that was referenced yesterday, we should, you think we should, we should recover all of that except forty-nine thousand for compressors and then anything else we refunded?
All I can say is I hope. I, you know, I don't see the future, but I, I feel that we all, we always have been in a good place, and as far as putting a number, two hundred and something thousand, I, I don't know. I can't answer that.
And that's the information I got from Ms. Gore yesterday, and that breaks down to the general fund that we're down one hundred and eighty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents, and in Roden Bridge, we're down fifty thousand, three oh five oh five. That's based on the current year budget for revenue in both of those line items for Advalorem taxes. That's where we are in both of those funds, and according to Ms. Gore, that's much lower than we have been in the previous years at this time of year. And that's, that was the reason for the concern.
Surely, are we through with the compressor lawsuits?
It is over.
Yeah, and this was nothing to do with Harden County. It was an appeals court or something that ruled.
Supreme Court.
That Supreme Court ruled that the compressor company, basically out in Caldwell, Texas and stuff, paid in the county that they were in, not in the county where the compressors were leased to, and they weren't leased to the county, they leased to oil companies.
They're appraised where they're sitting in the past, but the Supreme Court ruled that they should be appraised at the company, the owner.
Yeah, at the.
Their location.
Headquarters of where they came out, yeah.
Yes, sir. So that's a one-time.
One-time loss.
Never have that again.
And it's over.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Sure. Thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am. Any other discussion items on item number twenty-two from the court or anybody in the audience?
Let's say, Jerry.
Second.
I guess there's no one from the audience that has any discussion items. Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Pelt. All in favor? We're adjourned.